For the recording. Welcome, everybody, to the May 7th, 2014 County Study Session. Will Hall.
Councilmember Liver?
You.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeGolio?
Absent.
Mayor Winkes?
Here.
Thank you. Any public comments? Same then, we're going to go to those public comments. Let's go to the study session. Drainage study master plan update. Mike?
You're late. You're late. Were you on Marsh Road with the backup?
No.
Do you have a special police button?
Yes, I do. No, I don't.
Thank you, everybody. We're happy to have you. Phil was talking about you when we were in here.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're here this afternoon to kind of do a check-in with you. We have our consultants from NV5 who are here, Dave Richard, Wen Chen. And they're going to, at this point, staffs met with them a couple of times basically to go over their procedures and the process they're doing, the input that they've taken, the data they're collecting. And we would say the study is in the probably 50 to 60 percent range, so we're not prepared at this point to say, "Great, here's the solution, you know, everything's been done." But we thought it would be appropriate and important to solicit your input and also kind of give you an idea, because there's a lot of information, a lot of technical information. We've asked them to kind of keep it at a high level and over time, or at the next opportunity to actually present this to you, they'll be able to get into some more detail. But this way you'd have some of the background. I would also like to point out and also compliment the consultants, they had a public meeting about two and a half months ago, I guess, in which they also solicited the entire community to come in and make them aware of issues and concerns. We had several council members there at that time. Fortunately, the good news is it was not heavily attended, which we take to mean that many of the recommendations, as they will talk about, that were made in 2001 have been implemented, as well as the work that was done where the council adopted the standards to require post-development to, at worst, keep things the same and at best to try and improve storm flow off of developed properties. So we think those have been making improvements, so they're able to report on that. However, they're not able to report that every problem has been solved. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dave Richard, who's a principal with NV5, and he will launch into the interaction. And as always with the work sessions, we welcome your comments, your input, and your questions, and we have about 57 minutes to do that in.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm just going to stand here just briefly, because I'm going to turn it over real quick to Wen and that. We've been working on this project for a number of months, as Gordon said, we met a number of times with the staff. We have gone through, and Wen will talk a little bit about our methodology and the like of that, but we'd like to provide you with a broad view of where the town is drainage-wise, talk to you a little bit about some of the concepts, some of the philosophy that we've been applying to our work, get some input from you on how to set priorities in terms of projects and moving forward and that, and talk to you about next steps so that you're very, you're aware of the next pieces of work that we will be completing as part of this overall assignment and that. Wen Chen has been our project manager, he's been our technical lead throughout this project. And Nona Estenosa has been our project engineer. She's been the worker bee through this whole process and that. And actually, Nona has the distinction, and I don't know if this has been mentioned before, but she actually was one of the key contributors when we prepared the 2001 master plan. So made a lot of history in that and that respect. So with that, I'll turn it over to Wen to kind of lead us through our technical presentation.
Yeah, good afternoon, your honor, Ross. And I'm going to give you the presentation talking about town of Ascenton Storm Drain Master Plan update. So we'll first start talking about our objectives and following with a slight area overview and drainage system. And from there, we identified the drainage issue and proposed improvement, and then finally we'll prioritize capital improvement programs that along with this study. And after that, we're ready for questions. So we're going to summarize our initial findings and I'll suggest a solution to our findings and receive feedback on recommended priorities, and then we'll try to confirm our next steps. So this is an overview of town of Ascenton drainage area, and we have exhibits of the easel. And so basically, we have four drainage area in the town. And on the north most, that is flowing to Selby Lane, and then parallel to that, flowing to Alcamino Rail. And with that, now look at the south side, you have that Ascenton Channel. This Ascenton Channel actually, town of Ascenton is not a standalone contributor to the Ascenton Channel, we'll get to that momentarily. And if you look at the southeast quarter, there's a facial drainage line that actually would contribute to Ascenton Channel as well. So the information we're talking about can be summarized in a table. So we have the four drainage area, as you can see, approximately about two-thirds of runoff contributed to the Ascenton Channel area. And for the Ascenton Channel, there are three contributing communities. On the upside, on the north, would be Woodside, and that stands for unincorporated area. And in the middle, would be, on the south side, would be Meadow Park, an unincorporated area, parallel with Ascenton Town. Yes?
Hold on. I thought it was Portello Valley, which is where a lot of the runoff from the Horse Farms comes back. Did you, where is that included? Are you including that in Meadow Park, unincorporated?
It's Woodside.
I think that's Woodside.
That's Woodside.
Yeah.
I was there yesterday, or just before I left.
Okay. So can I, since, are we, can we talk about stuff? So I just, I want to ask a question about the Woodside-Stanford unincorporated, the 13 percent. Is this 13 percent, this is a number, how did you arrive at that? Is that a current number, or is that a historical number? Because I was just up at the annual board meeting of the Horse Park Board this afternoon, from 1:00 until almost 2:00, and they have made, since 2009, when I toured the massive rain deluge and the runoff that Mr. Lively and I toured at that time, with just watching water gush off of the top of the hill down into our channel with manure and runoff and everything, they've done significant changes. And I don't know if you're aware of those improvements that they've just made in 2011, '12, and '13, that really is intended to completely mitigate that runoff into our Atherton Channel with diversions and swales and ecosystems. They've spent over, you know, $80,000 to $100,000 in doing that, so.
Right. You know, along those very same lines, which is, you know, we brought up a couple times. If you look at an early 2000, late 1990s timeframe, they had substantially less covered areas. They have hardened the area and covered a lot of the area for indoor riding corrals, as well as horse storage areas, which are causing and, you know, and amplifying the amount of runoff. And so as you're, since you, I think one of the questions or items that Gordon brought up is you're looking for some direction on how you can move forward. So it may be that you've done an analysis in the 13 percent now. What was it 10 years ago, 15 years ago? Can you look at some satellite? Look at the amount of hard space today and look at what it was by satellite data or aircraft photos and calculate what that impact and change has been? Is that something that you can do?
Yes, definitely.
So, you know, maybe we go back to my original question. Where is the 13 percent? How is that determined?
Is that today?
Is that today, or is that historical? Where is that?
Or is that surface area, or is that water? What does the percentage represent?
This percentage is more represented by the drainage area. So if you look at the Ascenton Channel watershed, it is the striped hatch area, and you may not see it very clearly, but if you can turn to your page, to the page, and look at the Ascenton Channel watershed.
Oh, sure.
Can you explain this slide? Because there's a lot going on in here. You've got different colors.
Right.
And then you've got little images, some little squares and some dots and some diagonal lines and some chequered lines. It's very hard to understand exactly what is what. If you could walk us through it, it would be really helpful.
If you use that board and walk us through it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
What's the key number?
And yeah, what's the quantity? Quantity 100 equals?
Yeah. Okay. Let me walk you through that board and.
Well, why don't you bring your stand up, so you don't have to.
Yeah. Hold on. Sure. That's a lot better. I don't want to put glasses on.
Let me cover it. Okay. To show the board.
Well, can we turn it so it's facing to the, some of our main guests here could also...
Maybe push it back so it's not more.
How long is it?
That's excellent.
That's pretty good.
Okay. So, so the red line represents the top limit. And this limit is updated with latest information. There may be some annexation and change to touch limits. And as you notice, there are four hatch, four paddles to represent the drainage area. That drainage area does not really follow with the top limit, especially for the Ascenton Channel itself. So the Ascenton Channel you have here actually originated from the Woodside area, that represented by this color here, and this color represents Stanford unincorporated area. And then, or this yellow area here is Meadow Park on the south side, and with a hatch of a strip of green, that is unincorporated in Meadow Park. And this area represents town of Ascenton itself. So, excuse me. So the hatch stopped at the boundary of the large watershed that defined as the full represented large-scale watershed. And on the north side here, with the block, this is the Selby Lane. That means all the flow over here flowing this way. And then beginning from this, with the plus side here, this represents Alcamino Rail, and it discharge along Alcamino Rail pipelines. And then the rest of this is actually Ascenton Channel. We have a small area here, which is called the facial area to the Bay River. And actually, this Bay River, the drainage area eventually would discharge into Ascenton Channel as well. So if we, if we look at this in really large scale, everything south here is Ascenton, is the Ascenton watershed. Okay? And now back to the Q. Q represents the discharges. And the discharge at 100 means the 100-year discharges. And 100 year means that you have a flow that in the event, that event is, it only occurs once in 100 years in terms of probability. It doesn't really mean 100 you only have one occurrence, it means the probability is one, once in 100 years. So, so as you can see, start from here, Q100, and this is almost outside of the town limit.
And is the 287?
CFS, it's cubic feet per second.
Cubic feet per second.
Yeah, cubic feet per second. And then it goes through, as the drainage area increase, and you can see that the Meadow Park, the central land begins to contribute, and as we calculated, together with the unincorporated Meadow Park, it contributed 200 CFS into the Ascenton Channel to bring the total, the total 100-year flow to 670.
That's 677 after the 200 has come in, or is that coming down the channel prior to the 200?
That's actually coming down the channel. So it's basically 200 is from the Meadow Park.
So it's only from, you're calculating that's only from the unincorporated part of the channel?
Coming in. Coming into the channel.
Coming into the channel.
Okay.
Well, is it only from the unincorporated part, or from all the west? Because it's got to be more than the Q91 coming Valparaiso.
Yes, it's on the south.
Right.
Incorporated plus all the rest.
To the west.
Yeah.
Right. Yes, yeah. So let me just say that the people, the boarder directors, president, the Horse Park manager, superintendent, and they gave me a physical tour of all of this this afternoon, and they said that they have designed their horse barn 280-side runoff to meet standards of 100-year flood that will not go into our Atherton Channel directly, as it had been doing in 2009, 2010, and 2011 and before. And, you know, this has been a drought year, it was a low-rain year last year also, but there was rain, and it has been tested, and they are very convinced and confident that we will see a significant reduction in our runoff. And they have a manure shed that will prevent manure from leaching out and into that runoff.
Yeah, that's related to quantity concerns.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you can get the...
Can I get the schematics and give that to you?
The schematics and also the report.
The report?
The report. And to, I think back to Gordon and then distribute to us, and then we can incorporate that and update our study.
All right.
And get back. But what we, what we describe here is more like a contributing area, that I just talked about, that is accounted for 13 percent of the area contributing to Ascenton Channel. But in terms of the flow amount, and we have, as you can see, that we have the discharge at certain key points of Ascenton Channel that they increase. And when you get to the discharge point, the 100-year discharge will be around 1,400 CFS.
And then it goes into Redwood City.
Yes, it will go to Redwood.
Right. Redwood Channel.
Yes.
Unincorporated. And I was at the CMAC board meeting a week ago, and we brought this up, and former mayor of Redwood City, Alicia Aguilar, who's also on the CMAC and the MTC, she says, you know, all of this, you know, it's an issue for Redwood City because it goes into the low-line and lower-income areas that also experiences flooding when this bay is high. And that this is not just our problem, it's their problem, it's Meadow Park's problem, and it's a regional problem, and it's going to have to be solved.
Regionally, yes.
That we can't solve this ourselves.
Right.
So if I can just try to understand this a little bit more, it looks like coming out of Woodside into the channel, you, at 100 years, storm your estimate into 187 cubic feet a second. And that aggregates to about 677 where it meet, where there's significant additional flow coming in from the unincorporated area, Meadow Park. And it looks like in the channel about where you hit Barry, it's at 1,019 in a 100-year storm. Now, the quantities that are shown along Valparaiso, are they moving into the channel? Where are the...
Eventually, they are going to, so this means at the discharge point, the pipeline, and they may have the 65 CFS from this tiny watershed here, but then when this one keep moving, they are finally out for each.
Because that's on, that's Alcamino.
Bringing to the Atherton Channel also.
It goes from Alcamino to the Atherton Channel.
Right. And the other part, Meadow Park actually has its own drainage approach out. So just to finish, it looks like once we're down into the Marsh Road toward the end of our channel, in a 100-year storm, you've got 1,423 cubic feet a second.
Yes.
And in a 25-year storm, you've got 148?
No, no, no.
No, that's coming from Lemonwood.
Yeah, that comes from the Bay River.
But that's Q25 versus Q100.
Oh, we, we have actually Q25 for this 2 watershed, and Q25 for this one, because Ascenton Channel, and back in, back to 2001, the goal was trying to provide 100-year protection. So at that time, the Ascenton Channel was identifying, trying to identify the 100-year flow through the channel, how much it will be. So that's why we still use that concept and show it on our slide. But we do have the 25-year flow as well up here. And this 148 cubic feet per second, it only represents the flow coming from this side, from this watershed, the Bay River watershed.
Okay. So it's not exactly apples to apples, because one's 25, one's 100-year. Let's just ignore that for a moment. So my key question now is, where we're, where we're into the channel on Watkins, and in a 100-year storm, we've got 1,423 cubic feet a second, what can that channel, what is the maximum capacity that channel can handle?
I think the, it depends on the location.
Well, where that arrow is. At the end.
At the end, I think the capacity is about 900 CFS.
Yeah, I think it was the study, if I may jump in, the study that BKF did on Big Brink Cardoso for the design of that, I believe said 977 CFS is the capacity before the channel is overtopped by the flow. So maybe halfway down, the water starts leaving, and you may remember, that's why the council said, "If you put a lid on it," and the BCA said, "If we put a lid on it, we still have to allow water to get out."
Yeah.
Because we don't want to surcharge into that culvert and make a problem further downstream.
977.
977, you know, that, you don't really need to stick to like a single digital.
Right.
I think 900 would be, would be a number that you want to use.
But I thought that was for our channel, but...
Yes.
But what is it going into? Because at the end of our channel, it's a double pipe box culvert that goes into bay, and it's substantially smaller than ours. So what is it that, that's where we're getting flooding that goes into the unincorporated park? So what is, did you look at what it was going into Meadow Park? Because Briggs Cardopen did not look at that, one of the things we talked to them about.
I don't have that figure, but I thought what they said was, it was, the flooding was occurring both because of the channel downstream having less capacity, as well as the head wall being skewed improperly.
Yeah, but their thing is, they have a, they have a fur down of about three to, three to four feet, and then they got, and it goes into two separate channels, and there's a centerpiece that's about a foot wide as well. I'm going to go picture up here.
I think you've seen it.
So, so there would be reduced capacity going from our untopped channel into there, which, you know, causes the water to hit there, and it goes out onto Marsh Road and then floods those people in the unincorporated park, which they, that's what they were here talking about.
Okay. So just one more question, George. How does that compare to the seven-year capacity figure that we've been talking about?
The Atherton Channel, at the conclusion of their study, I think he's going to address that. The current channel has capacity for a seven-year storm. I think we're looking at retention issues for both the 10-year and 25-year as part of that proposal, which we haven't got from their work.
Okay, so am I misunderstanding? Because it sounded to me like the 1,423 cubic feet per second is a 100-year storm.
Right.
And I thought that you'd said that the capacity of the channel was about 900.
900, yes.
Yeah, I don't know if I can read the seven. I'll leave that in a bag.
Well, you might be talking two different things.
It's not linear. A 50-year storm doesn't produce 700.
Oh, I see.
A 25-year doesn't produce 350. They're curves.
Okay, sure, that makes sense.
Yeah, just to give you a rough sum, a rough sum, if it is a 100-year versus a 50-years, and the ratio between 50 and 100 years is about 0.9.
0.9.
Yeah, that means you have 1,400, and then times 0.9, then you can get 50.
50.
And then 25 years would be another 0.9 of 50 years. And 10 years is about, is about, almost like a 0.9 to 0.95 at some point. So, right. So you wouldn't be surprised by that, what we're saying, 900 is input to seven years in there.
Got it, thank you.
Okay.
As I said, that's really a large part of the reason for this study session. There's a lot of technical information, and this will give you a good, you know, hopefully a good basis as you look at the study when it comes forward the next time.
Yeah.
I think that's an important issue for us to clarify to the residents as we discuss this, because intuitively, somebody would very easily think, "Well, a 20-year storm has twice as much water as a 10-year storm." It's clearly nowhere close.
Nowhere close.
And I just think we need to all, as we communicate this, we need to be clear about that, because that's pretty important.
But also, 0.9 times 1,400 is still way over the capacity of the channel.
Oh, yeah. That's...
And 0.9 times 0.9, it's still way over the capacity of the channel. So every 25 years, it's going to flood.
Oh, yeah.
Or more often than that.
More often than that.
Is that interesting? Okay.
So if you allow, if you allow me, the last piece of information on this slide, I just wanted to summarize that for Ascenton Channel, for the watershed, that actually you have 49 percent of the area contributing to Ascenton Channel are from town of Ascenton, outside of the town. So the town itself contributes 51 percent to Ascenton Channel, if we just use the area as the basis for the contribution.
Okay, say that again. So the town of Atherton contributes 51 percent to the Atherton Channel runoff, and everybody else contributes 49 percent?
Yes.
Based on area.
Based on area.
It's interesting.
That's what we've been saying, but...
Yeah, because this is a...
Area of runoff.
Area, yes.
Area of runoff.
Yeah. And this concept maybe is another, another area that may, may be sometimes a little bit misleading. For the drainage area contributing to the, to the channel itself, it really depends on the harder the area on the surface. So the more you have, that means the runoff cannot really infiltrate into the ground. What can happen? It only flowing as overflow on the surface. But if you have a lot of soil, lot of loose area and rain area, even if you have a larger area, they may contribute the less overlap flow into the channel. And depend on the nature, and I mean based on the, on the development and the nature of Ascenton compared to the other area, and in terms of the runoff percentage, this number may change. But I think to keep it a simple rule of sum, that is 50 percent from town of Ascenton, 50 percent from outside. That would be easy for you to use that information.
Remember that. However, however, you want to know the formula? The formula for calculating this is P to the E equals 1 minus 1 bracket, 1 minus 1 over T close bracket.
Yes.
To the nth power.
Yes.
Well, I knew that, but I just didn't want it to look like a smartphone. And show off our engineer. No, I didn't have to either.
I was helping them out.
Mike, here. Well, no, my comment is that I think that the takeaway here is that, again, we're just talking about area. We're not talking about the actual flow of water. So what, what they've been able to do here is to say, by area, 49 percent... So what, what they've been able to do here is, is say, by area, forty-nine percent is contributing to the creed, to Appleton Channel, but we don't know, say, if there's a hundred gallons, that's not to mean that forty-nine gallons is coming from these other areas. Okay, so, and that's, that's a piece of information we don't, we don't have at this point.
So they're just. Based on surface area.
Surface area, because square footage, square inches, square feet.
Yes, because it's, because what produces the runoff is the amount of impermeable area, right? Makes sense, right? So, so what we don't know is how much impermeable is coming from these other areas.
Well, you would think that with the more densely populated areas like Metal Park or you, houses are on smaller lots, and they take up more physical space on those smaller lots. They would contribute more impermeable surface area than an acre lot, even with a thousand square foot house on it, that has their, you know, swales and drainage detention trenches and, you know, hard-piped water runoff into that.
Plus their streets have sidewalks, and their streets are also broader than our streets.
Right, and that's a good control, so they have cliffs down there.
Yeah.
And they have downtowns and retail centers and, you know.
And lots of money to pay for them.
And they think that's the only areas with lots of parking lots.
But on the other hand, as you get close to two eighty, where there's open space, Stanford open land.
That's true.
Or, you know, totally rural, you're going to have less.
The thing is, the horse farms have done a substantial amount of work. That's a, that's really great, that really is great.
I was, I was shocked, because as you know, I had gone up there in 2009 with Mr. Lybly, and it was a mess, and it was torrent. And that has always stuck in my head, and we knew that they were making lots more improvements. But anyway, I'll get all that information.
Okay. So, so this slide lists the power of Aston drainage components. And basically, started from the outside detention and then, and the dry wells, and then the flow would actually go through the valley gutter and roadway deters, and then flow into the storm drain pipes. And for the Aston Channel, the flow would eventually outflow into the Aston Channel. You see that I read the, I read, actually, I read the components backwards, because it just started from the, the single units and then concentrated as overflow, overlap flow, and finally get to the Aston Channel. So, from our initial finding, we concluded that the town storm drain system capacity is limited to a ten-year event. And the Aston Channel, it receives two-thirds of the town's stormwater runoff, and the channel's capacity is limited to a seven-year storm event. And a lot of locations, at a lot of locations, the capacity actually is limited to five years because of the bottleneck or other conditions. And the stormwater runoff remain pretty much the same for the town since the last update that we did for the town in 2001.
That's based on a?
Based on no Woodside improvements that was mentioned.
But that doesn't take into account these changes that may be helpful to the Horse Park.
Right, so that's why I said we may need to evaluate that information and get into.
But, but I find that hard to live too, because since 2001, there has been a tremendous amount of new construction. And all of those new rules of having to keep all of your stormwater that falls onto your property, on your property and permeating into the ground via a dry well or a detention trench or swell or something. And so I, I, I have to think that.
That policy is useful. That's why, that's why the, when we start with the drainage system components, we cannot ignore the outside detention and dry wells, because those facilities really intercept additional flow from the development.
So we should get.
So you get almost the same flow from, from the 2001.
Okay.
If you finish, if you finish your study, can you get from the planning department, how many new homes were built under these new ordinances? And maybe do some factor, you know, fudge factor? And calculate that and find.
Yeah, just a point of clarity on that. I mean, I understand Elizabeth, your question, but the further new requirements, that doesn't mean that all the water just stays on this property and never reaches the drainage system. What it's doing is that it's retaining the water so that, although, you know, with the new homes, what's happening is that there's more impermeable area, which would generate more runoff. But the whole purpose of the town's policy is just to retain it so that it is not increasing even the flow to the Appleton Channel. That doesn't mean that water, every, every drop of water that is, that's falling on new development is never getting to the drainage system. That's not what it means. It just means that it's being delayed so that the overall impact to the Appleton Channel is not, is, has not been increased. So, so that, so that new development within the town is not exacerbating or creating more and more downstream drainage issues.
So those calculations of how big your detention trench has to be, is calculated on how much impermeable surface. I mean, I just know that all my downsides are hard-piped into the drain that goes straight into my backyard, into this giant, you know, six-foot-wide diameter, you know, pipe pit that's forty feet long and, you know.
I have the same thing.
Do you know what I mean?
Exactly. But what Mike's saying is that that's just taking the water that's coming off the rooftops and the hardscape.
Yeah.
And reducing its immediate discharge into the drainage system.
But where does it go? It doesn't go into a storm sewer.
No.
It percolates down. Because the only thing, the storm sewer just runs, a river runs in front of the house, you know.
Yeah, it's going to fill up in a certain capacity storm, for sure.
And at some point, it may overflow. What our requirements are, are that post-new development, you cannot discharge more than you did with the previous.